Please be with us tonight in this meeting and be with the citizens of Harris County, those that are here, those that are abroad, be with our military, protect them, and let them know how much we appreciate what they do for us to protect our freedoms. We ask, oh Lord, that you guide this commission as we conduct the business of the county and set the policy for this county. Help us to hear the options, to evaluate them in their proper light, and make good decisions. We ask, oh Lord, that you be with our county attorney, help him in his recovery, and we look forward to his return. We ask these things in the name of your son, Jesus Christ. Amen. All right, I call on Commissioner Woods to lead some pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I would like to introduce to you Mark DiGennaro here at the end, who is our temporary acting legal counsel. Mark comes to us highly recommended, and he will be with us until John returns. So we had a number of things in John's recovery is, you don't recover very quickly from back surgery, and it takes a while to get through it, so we could not put aside some of the issues facing us, and some of them had deadlines. So Mark was graciously agreed to help us out with that, and so look forward to seeing him here. He's already been in the county a couple of days. He lives up in La Grange, Tripp County, but he's been in the county a couple of days with Randy going around looking at some of the issues that we have facing us, and so we're glad to have you here, Mark. Thank you very, very much.
Thank you.
All right. We have several sets of minutes to approve, six different sets. Are y'all okay with doing them all in one fell swoop? Okay. And we have minutes from the regular session of May the 15th, the budget work session number three on May the 29th, budget work session number two on May the 22nd, budget work session number one on May the 15th, the planning session on May the 4th, and then the comprehensive plan, public hearing number one, a kickoff on April the 24th. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion that all six be accepted as written.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Motion carries. Any parents of citizens? We had one sign up. Any others besides the one that signed up?
Yes, sir.
Okay, is Mr. David Gray here? All right, Mr. Gray did not show up. Okay, old business agreement with the Correctional Resource Group for the jail inmate food service ratification. Mark, I don't know whether you want to talk about that or not. We were just checking, checking that because I guess we need to be reminded every day on what our policies are. So the sheriff does has the right, or do you want to?
I think that the bottom line there is that that particular subject area falls under the duty and authority of the sheriff. This board is not required to approve or ratify it. Generally, you ratify something, you ratify an act of an agent for duty that's delegated from you to them, so I don't believe this is something that would require any action under law.
Okay. All right, any commissioners have any questions for Mr. DiGennaro? Not yet.
I have a question, maybe Clint about it.
Okay.
So if we don't ratify this, and this is a contract that's pulled by the auditors, but we have a fund in our audit.
Only if it's against our internal policy procedure. It could perceive, perception could be there.
I think you were referring to the bid requirement that we have, but that's for county business, and I think it is not for where the sheriff has the authority. He does not bound by that.
I don't think that would be something to be addressed with the auditors at the time, to explain the process.
Okay. So we don't need to ratify it, then, so we will just move ahead. Okay, any other old business?
I have one other thing. In the minutes, we saw where we were appraised of the Melody Lakes options, and we said that we were going to have a meeting with the citizens in Melody Lakes. We haven't set a date for that, but we can do that pretty soon.
Yes, that meeting really, and one of the days Mark was here, was to take him, he went to Melody Lakes. One of the things before we have that meeting is to really know what our legal options were, as to who owns the lake, the property lines, and as soon as that's clarified, which will come probably through Mark, but also some search on the D's and whatnot, as soon as we know that thing, yes, we do need to have that meeting with Melody Lakes and as to, I guess, kind of what the situation really is and the risk. But thank you. Okay.
Would that be with the whole board?
Commissioners?
Yes.
Absolutely. Absolutely, yeah. I think, I think we all need to have that done, and probably that's an open session type thing, because we have a May cloud session, so we will put it on the agenda for when we feel we, when Mark lets us know we've got the answers. But yes, we do need to do that. It's one of those things you can't put off definitely now that we're under the gun. As long as we're making some progress, I think we'll be okay soon enough. Okay, the next item then is a proclamation recognizing Myra Stevens Brown, the Latin Business, I mean, excuse me, American Business Women's Association District One Vice President. Myra is not here tonight, but I will read the proclamation anyway. Proclamation, whereas the Atlanta Area Council of the American Business Women's Association is comprised of 12 chapters supporting personal and professional development activities for women as well as outreach initiatives and community partnerships, providing student and business skills scholarships, online learning and networking, as well as leadership opportunities. And whereas the Atlanta Area Council will honor District One Vice President Myra Stevens Brown of Harris County, Georgia, to celebrate her contribution to the advancement of business women. And whereas Myra Stevens Brown has been a member of the ABWA Harris County Charter Chapter for more than 16 years, serving in numerous leadership roles. And whereas in addition to her involvement with ABWA, Myra worked for more than 25 years in photo imaging and began her own business. Her love of photography led her to start Dirt Road Memories while traveling down dirt roads to cities and farms throughout Georgia. Her keen eye was helpful, has helped capture venerable places, things, and keepsakes in the form of photography of her customers. And whereas Myra is married to Jerry Brown, a retired United Technologies Corporation employee who loves to cook, and they will be celebrating their 50th anniversary in August. Myra and Jerry have two children, Jason and Jennifer, and six grandchildren. And whereas Myra believes if you don't respect yourself, no one else will, which were the words that her mother lived by and that silled in her children, in addition to the way you treat yourself sets the standard for others on how you demand to be treated. Now therefore, the Harris County Board of Commissioners hereby joins the Atlanta Area Council of the ABWA in recognizing Myra Stevens Brown and proclaiming Saturday, July 28th, 2018, as Myra Stevens Brown Appreciation Day in Atlanta, so proclaimed this fifth day of June 2008. Do I contain a motion?
I'll make the motion to approve the proclamation. Second?
You have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Motion carries. All right, next, we have a presentation tonight from the Valley Partnership Joint Development Authority. It's kind of a quarterly update and report, and we have two Brian's here with us, Brian Anderson, who is president of Columbus Chamber of Commerce and Valley Partnership, and Brian Salito, who's executive vice president. Welcome, gentlemen. Good to see you here tonight.
Thank you, Chairman, Commissioner. Thank you all for your time and time here. Given the fact back in January, we gave a much broader overview, it was overdue in some respects, tonight, I wanted to give you a more brief update on activities for the first quarter, but leave as much time as you want for questions or clarification. So I'm going to go through a couple of points first, and then Brian will walk through the project activity, and then again, both will leave an overview, you all ask questions or anything that we need to clarify, if you want, just to be useful for your time. I'm going to start at the top with, I mean, this is very brief and succinct, so we make sure we get your time right. So from a budget standpoint, I wanted you to know, because we don't talk about it enough, probably enough as we should, but to execute economic development, to have the professional staff, the marketing and the branding to make the regional name where it needs to be, and to make sure that we're front and center of the different people that bring projects, the state technical development team, consultants that are in the site selection business, in some cases developers, to make sure we're in front of them. We have an annual plan that is both in staff executed and regular marketing that you might do for any type of product or service. This year, we'll spend approximately $650,000 to execute that plan. That's just on, again, professional staff, attending trade shows and conferences, and entertaining those that bring us projects, to bring them to your sites, to bring them to Columbus sites, Talladega County sites, wherever they want to go. That $650,000 is made up of the Development Authority of Columbus, puts about $300,000 in revenue into that enterprise. The Valley Partnership Agreement and Regional Partnership, we have a few all, it's about $250,000, and the Columbus Chamber puts another $100,000 into that budget to make sure we have the resources we need. To give you a little bit of perspective as to what that compares to, Carroll County is just to our north, spends about $1 million annually to execute their economic development. North Georgia, Whitfield County, where I came from, spends about $800,000. So, you know, it's an adequate budget, meaning we're doing the things we need to do, but it's certainly not robust like some of those we're competing against. So I wanted you to have that perspective. Secondly, when you look at Columbus 2025, which includes Harris County, Feeding City, Russell County, and not so much the non-MSA players, we don't have the data for them, unfortunately, because that's how the government pulls numbers, but we do have partnerships with Marion, Chattahoochee, and Talladega to help them with the initiatives. So for Columbus 2025, since the Valley Partnership Party is a, has funding to go for economic development, we also did not ask those participating counties to fund Columbus 2025. So there's not an extra ask like there was for Columbus State University, or Columbus Technical College, for the corporate partners. We have additional ask to fund Columbus 2025, which is our regional plan.
Ryan, let me interrupt you, but Michigan 2025 and another, you know, there's been some contention about Columbus focus.
Absolutely.
That name, as I understand it, goes away at the end of this year, being, if you would just...
Yeah, I'm glad you brought that up, Chairman. It has been since day one, and it's, I mean, also been North Georgia, they've got Chattanooga Plan, there's 15 counties, Chattanooga, you know, nobody wants Chattanooga to be the name. It happened. So that has been deliberated quite aggressively the last six, eight months, and there will be those that are leading at the board of directors, if you will, who's been here, he's chairman, serves on. We'll pick a name. It can be Valley Partnership, it can be Regional Valley, it can be Chattahoochee Valley, we'll pick some name, because it really doesn't matter about what we call the plan, it matters how we tell our story externally. When we're competing against Huntsville, or Greenville, or Sharp, or Savannah, we want to be able to tell people about our region, and we've got some marketing out there, so thank you for clarifying that. So 2019, we'll see a different brand in the sense of the collective, but we'll make sure we've got some marketing work we're doing now with a company called Golden Shovel, that we hope, if you can read Site Selection Magazine, Georgia Trend, Area Development Magazine, you'll see ads that communities and regions run, and they range, you'll have one for, you know, Fort Worth, Texas, and it's just the city of Fort Worth. Or you may have like southwestern Arkansas, where there's five counties in a partnership. So they call it Southwest Arkansas, but then they list the individual counties. We're trying to figure out what's the best way that, if I'm reading it, I don't really have to know much about Columbus or Harris County or Talladega, I know that region of the country, and then we can list the attributes of each county, so we have some work going on there. Now to go through the 2025 objectives, we give those to, it's really to be aware that those things happen every day from how we work with Fort Benning, because you may not have contracts from Benning and Harris County, but you may have people living here. And so we do think as we look at joint land use studies, we look at land use in a sense of how much barrier, buffering you need between Fort Benning and counties, we're doing that work, and sort of work with your county manager on those types of work. So with that, I'll stop and begin to be ready to answer questions. I really want Brian to walk you through what's happened in the first quarter, and I'll add some clarity on some of that.
And just before you start, I'd like Mr. Gary Jones, who has made presentations here before, so he's certainly his property owner here in Harris County. We thoroughly enjoy his updates from time to time, Gary's here with these two, one file.
He's got the real answers.
It's a blur job to be sure you're here to be quiet.
All right.
Thank you, Brian. Good evening, everyone. I wanted to share with you this next section of our report, which talks a little bit about prospect activity and our economic development work plan. Let me spend just a moment talking about prospect activity and give you a little bit of context. Year to date, starting January 1st to just the end of May, we have worked 26 leads in the Valley Partnership region. I will tell you that just in the month of May alone, two of those sites required, were leads from the state that required grad certified states. These are sites, these are sites that are in a further state of readiness, and frankly, we have one grad site in the region, and it's in the Muskogee Technology Park. And frankly, it's not even a mistake that we probably will make the cut on either one of these two projects, because the game has changed and evolved, that companies don't have time for trees to be removed from the site and the site made pat-ready. And frankly, we don't even have that level of readiness in Columbus, let alone that level of readiness in Harris County, or Talladega County, or Marion County, or some of the other partners. So I just wanted to kind of give you a feel for what the leads look like. Three of those leads in the month of May required substantially large available buildings. Two of them were office projects that needed 40,000 to 60,000 square feet. Another one was a, was a project that needed over 100,000 square feet of existing warehouse space. And we may get that in the region with NCR leading Columbus, some of you may have seen that in the news. That's going to enable us to leverage those buildings as available, and hopefully recruit some new companies and get some jobs back to work, maybe as soon as the fall or early next year. But I just wanted to give you kind of a sense of the projects. From time to time, on calls that I get directly, either from the state or from site selection consultants or brokers, we're able to then suggest or recommend other sites in the region. And we've done that one time so far year to date, and that was on a project called Project Helen, that was brought to us back in February. It was a 50-acre site, heavy industrial aluminum casting machine, that would be 500 jobs, and so we also recommended the Northwest Harris Business Park for that site. I'll just wrap up and conclude my comments with the bottom section that talks about our economic development work plan, which still includes our regional website, choosecolumbusga.com, which not only provides information about the region as a whole, specifically information about each of our partners, but also is a generator of leads for us. We do advertise in Georgia Trend, we've done marketing with the Georgia Economic Developers Association, we recently partnered with the state at a cyber security conference in San Francisco, which not only gave us good exposure to our state partners, but also to that whole burgeoning fintech cyber security world, which is hopefully going to bear some fruit for us in the coming years. We are planning to do some regional visits with not only our Georgia Department of Economic Development Project Manager folks, but also consultants, what we call a fan tour, a familiarization tour, where we would host two or three site selection consultants, or three or four project managers, show them what the property product looks like in the region. That would include a visit to Harris County, Muskogee County, potentially Talladega County, because they have a 100-acre site as well. And then also show them quality of life and have them exposed to some fun, whether that's, you know, Callaway Gardens, or a whitewater excursion, or a zip line, something like that. We're also working on the project attraction, a business attraction end of things, not just some of the traditional things that we're doing in relationship building with project managers or site selection consultants or brokers, but we're also being proactive with a targeted marketing campaign specifically aimed at STEM-related companies, science, technology, engineering, math, and secondarily, food manufacturing and packaging, because both of those are seen as good prospects for our region. I'll just wrap things up by talking about our targeted industry trade show events that we're still going to try to target, automotive, while things have been ebbing and flowing in the automotive industry. There's a major show that's going to be in Atlanta in October that we'll visit. We're still making plans to try to figure out how we're going to continue to leverage the aerospace commitment that Pratt Whitney and others have made in the region. We want to attract, I mentioned, food manufacturing, we're looking at doing a show maybe sometime in the winter, and then robotics, and leveraging all of that that is going on with Fort Benning and how we might be able to play in that arena as well. And then lastly, taking our story out on the road with visits to site selection consultants in Atlanta, and possibly also places like Dallas, or New York, or Greenville, Chicago.
So in addition to what lies in the site work, I want you all to know that, you know, even we're not here every day, which we're not, I mean, we're not even in front of you all, this is stuff we're doing on behalf of the region. So we're, and people get called up sometimes that really don't, I think, understand economic development as much as they could, is we get called in, there's Harris County competing with Columbus, and you're not. There's an occasion, there's a renewed chance that there could be a 150-acre site up here in the 50-acre site Columbus that the same customer wanted, then we are competing. And at that point, you know, Harry representing you all needs to say, what will Harris County do for that project? And then the mayor and council of Columbus have to, we've done our work, we've given it to you all, make the decision. Nine times out of 10, or 99 out of 100, we are really competing with another region. That's what this was starting, the Valley Partnership was really cool before it was cool, or in place before it was cool. It's now becoming imperative. If you're not working regionally, then somebody, whether it be an individual community, or even that regional partnership's not going to be as effective as you compete against Savannah, Charlotte, Chattanooga. It really comes down to what region of the country somebody's properties would be in. We want to be as strong as we can, the money that is available, the resources is adequate, it's not robust, but it's adequate for us to tell our story, to get people around the country to know about this region. Two that Brian mentioned specifically, robotics, which is a very fast emerging opportunity because of Fort Benning. It really puts all of us in the center of this, we're saying rectangle, it's really a trapezoid, I'm not a geometry guy, but it's a funny looking box, because how we use Auburn, Georgia Tech, Kennesaw, which now has Southern Poly, when they merge, having those higher ed institutions mean that a smaller 50-person firm, an engineering firm, may want to be more in your back door because they can reach those other places than as far south as Columbus. That's what happens when you look at some of these that are going to play in a bigger pond than maybe just one community. The second would be that aerospace, we can see what Pratt Whitney's going to do, what they may, they're now big enough that some of their suppliers will look to locate to this part of the country. Right now, they can ship material and still put the engines to make the parts and to do the overhaul. It's going to get to a point where they don't need to put suppliers closer to the location they want. So those are the two that I think is the best opportunity to see things spread out. I know it seems like Columbus may get the lion's share of attention, but that's really not what is happening when you look at the projects that are going to keep coming. If you need to do more work at your business park, absolutely, so does Columbus. When I got here and looked at what we had was grad certified, what was leveled, what was ready to market, it's inadequate. We do not have, matter of fact, you didn't see the South Korean solar project announced two weeks ago, Dalton, Georgia won that because they had a 40-acre site that we did for a lot of time there, completely flat, $1 million store water put in, and now that company can start building tomorrow. We got eliminated, this region got eliminated, so we didn't have that. So we're working, we think we ought to work, again, with your part, to make sure you get one or two sites as completely ready to build on as possible, which again, costs money. Put that in a hush and answer or clarify or answer your questions.
Why have we not heard before about two weeks ago about grad?
Haven't heard about?
Yeah.
Well, I mean, I don't know if we, I mean, maybe have talked to you all as far as a commission, I know that we work with, you know, your staff, we work with Western Columbus Authority to know that that is a tool that's in Georgia, used in the state of Georgia. You want to speak to how far back you may have had conversations, but it's been around since at least the early 2000s concept. Most communities haven't, don't have a site. Georgia, right now, is the least amount of grad sites available that we've ever had because they've used them. But that's one that takes a lot of money. Now, in Columbus's case, I was under the assumption we had the whole parts provided. When we started looking at the data, what we were presenting, we had two sites, and so now we've got to get them. So whether or not we told you all that about the business park, I don't know what's happened in the past, but there don't be, I don't even...
No, I, certainly there's been no concerted presentation about it. I think I was familiar with grad, just knowing that it existed, but as far as, we didn't have any money at that point in time, and we got a billion and a half dollar surprise relocating the stream, so that, you know, pretty much takes us out of that, but we do have the rest of that about approaching 100 acres, that will, it's the flattest we've got, and that's where we begin to look.
And again, the effort to announce the Development Authority strategy, the development strategy of the chamber, I think, helps, you know, as part of the squat house, identify what you don't have. Again, Columbus, Talladega County, nobody's got the level of grad certification we need. And grad is a little bit misleading, we can remember. Grad means the state of Georgia says it's ready for accelerated development, what it stands for. It really means, do you have had, if you had the work done so that you shorten that amount of time a company needs to get operational? Grad's part of that, but you could actually have a site that's ready to build on that doesn't meet the other standards of grad certification. So if you had a 50-acre site that you all, it fits all the water delineation and the boundaries of other natural resources, and it's 50 acres you can build on, it may just mean you want to get it cleared, level graded, and some stormwater done. The stormwater can take you three months to six months if it's a very difficult piece of property to work with. So that's more important, getting that work done than just the grad certification, that's just part of it.
I think to Jim's point, we didn't know a couple of weeks ago that there were kind of 12 steps that you really had to go through to get certified. So with our chamber, then, we will be working, looking at that, doing what we can, some of them are inexpensive or not involved at all, but we will at least begin that, Charlie.
And Commissioner Woods, even with, I would submit to you, without water and sewer on the site, those other 11 steps are useless. In the grad certification process, trying to get that certification when you don't have the utility infrastructure... have the utility infrastructure, which is one of the boxes that you have to check, you really don't get the certification anyway. But to Brian's point, there are things you can do to get in a further state of readiness without going through a grad certification process.
And the other little bit of that is, greenfield development is also not for chosen path right now. Many projects, when South Carolina beats us right now, it's because they've got buildings available, they've got spec buildings, they've got empty buildings. So the state of Georgia is in a difficult situation as far as inventory, so we're losing projects that need a building today, because they don't have time to build on them. So it's all of us who are completing Columbus is having a big conversation about, do we get into spec building business? And we simply provide the technological definition, but it's not our place to say, yes, it counts, you ought to spend $5 million on a spec building, that's their decision. We just told them that buildings are being sought after more and more than greenfield sites.
But the Georgia Department of Economic Development won't put us on their list of potential sites unless we're certified?
No, again, it depends. There are some that come in, as Brian mentioned, that say it's got to be a grad certified site. That's not all of them. Every RFI is different, the rest of the information. So when they come in, to Brian, is a direct call from the state, or it could be a direct call from a site selection consultant, or a developer, it's going to say, I need to know you have 50 acres, or 100,000 square foot ability, or some parameter around what they need, because we're a call center, or we're an aerospace manufacturer. What do you have in that region? And so he looks at our database, which we try to keep up to date with what we know about, and what we work with our commercial developers on. Sometimes they don't tell us everything, this building's available. So we take that information, and he'll put that in the RFI. These locations fit your criteria. Doesn't always have to be a grad certified. Georgia's not going to delist you.
That's what I understood, to tell us if you...
On two of the projects.
No, but the other meeting we had two weeks ago, economic development.
Well, we had an economic development meeting in Collins, we were talking about new business recruitment, right? Yes, I did say that the state maintains a database of grad certified sites.
But it doesn't mean all sites have, doesn't mean all projects will only go there. The solar panel project with Dalton, Georgia, their first criteria was, we need X acres that we can build on in six months. By the time they spend some more time looking, they said, we got to start building tomorrow, which sites can we build on and are grad certified? That was the last clarification before they awarded it. We got, Harry, you got the listed, and Dalton wanted. In addition, it was Dalton first, and then the city, and Dalton, or Georgia, wanted, because we added A sites to show that project. But it's not all grad certified sites. Not having one doesn't mean you don't get looks, it just means you may not be as far along for certain projects.
What it means is, your site is not on the state's list of grad certified sites. That doesn't mean you'll never get a lead from the state, it just depends on the timing of the project. How many leads have you had for Harris County last year? I've worked one now. I don't know about.
All right, any other questions? Someone, thank you very much, appreciate it. I let the time slide by for the public hearing, but I did so annoyingly, because it's a, there's been a request to withdraw the application, and Malin Condrich is not here, so no one as far as I know anyone on that side. So they have requests to withdraw the application to amend the zoning conditions for the 10.43 acres located on Land Lots 47, 48, Land District 19, Mapo 45, Parshall 063, and 029 C, 78 Mulberry Drive, Catala, currently zoned C4, and it was properly advertised. But as with our request for withdrawal, we just need to take a vote on whether we will allow the withdrawal. If that vote passes, then through with it. Is there a motion regarding this?
I'll make the motion to approve the withdrawal of the application.
Motion, second, and discussion. All in favor, please see the hand. Motion carries. Please withdraw. All right, the next item is the financial statement for March 2018, which was previously provided to you. Tonight, we were given the one for April, which we considered our next meeting. So is there a motion regarding this financial statement?
I make a motion, and that should be approved.
Second.
A motion, and a second, discussion.
I'd just like to point out just a couple of high-level items up here. On page three, you'll look for total general fund revenues. So through March 2018, that's 75% of the year is complete, and our general fund revenues are at 77.6%, so we're right on target for those revenues. On the next page, page four, these are by department listing, and if you look at total general fund expenditures for the year, at 75% are roughly 62% for departments, so spending control was, has been done very well by each department, and also the control that probably has been properly done this year. As you can see through these high-level numbers, really looking at that, there's nothing else in here that's a red flag you're on, that you shouldn't be at this point. So unless you guys have questions beyond that, I just wanted to point out where we stand, we're 15% below expenditures. You know, come year end, some projects and things will be coming up, but we've got a cushion built in there, and I think we're in a comfortable position. We're looking good for year end, for the first time in several years.
Just to bring us up to date on where we stand as far as the new software, is actually meant to handle, Kevin?
Everything is on schedule with the finance department side, on the commissioner's side as far as the AP modules, the payroll modules, the GL modules. The only one that's still up right now is utility building, which is the department. Their system is very antiquated, it's from the early 90s, and we're having a time getting some of the data into the form that they need. Other than that, we're on schedule, a little behind schedule on utility building. Working with Casale to move forward through that, but the others are on schedule.
Okay. You should have it completed roughly.
We gave you the timeframe of, I believe, we had said September to October, and I'm still shooting for that timeframe.
Good. Thank you, sir.
So you'll enter the budget in the old system, will?
We'll still be working out of the old system, we'll still be working in the old system, but even once the other items are in the other one, where they run them in tandem as a test scenario, so that we make sure that the payroll that we put in, our current system, and the payroll we put in Casale, come up with the same numbers and so forth. And we'll put the budget into votes, and so they'll both be running for a certain test period of time simultaneously, and that's how they'll test how, what we're coming up with is, that they're correct, and then we'll have a go live, or the one will be shut off, and Casale will take over.
Okay. Any other questions? Is there a motion? We already got it, sorry. All in favor, please see the hand. Motion carries. All right, the next item is the, this is, this is open the, thanks, open the public hearing, which will be the first of two public hearings regarding the proposed budget. We have had three budget work sessions, May 15, May 22, and May 29, and then we had one preceding this meeting tonight, which was just to clean up a couple of things, which we have done. We've heard from department heads, we've heard from constitutional officers, includes every, every item in our budget. We kind of got two budgets. We have a budget that is really, it's all wrapped into one, but it's, we have a budget where the funds come in from SPOST and things like that, T-SPOST, and it's a straight pass-through, it gets spent, but then the other, and that's about, like, $45 million range, somewhere around that range.
With the whole budget?
Total, the whole way, about $45, and about 20. In this current year, our budget was a little over $22 million for stuff that was generated here within the county general fund budget. So we have reduced that budget for next year. Glad to hear that we're controlling our expenses so well this year. But there are copies of this budget, other than the changes, we made a few changes tonight, and if, Clint, if you would, just go over those changes we made tonight, so that the folks here will have the advantage of the latest, and then we will open the floor for any public comments.
So would you like to start from the prior number that was the 21,000, or just the small?
Yeah, well, I think, yeah, we got, the budget in the back was through the last meeting, the last work session, I believe, was it not?
That's right.
Okay, well, all right, and then, yeah, go over those changes and the ones, the little ones we made tonight.
Okay. Okay, the, under the general fund, the budget changes that were made for the fiscal year 2018-19, proposed budget, first off, under the community center, $12,000 were taken out for commercial patio furnishings, but $1,600 were added back in for picnic tables, two picnic tables out at the community center patio site. Also...
Let me just, Brian, is it, those two picnic tables are to help us utilize an area that is being underutilized right now? It's an area where we can make it available, certainly during the good weather, we can make it available and rent that space out, so get some more income coming in for parties or whatnot out there.
The second item under our IT department was the elimination of $25,000 for courthouse security camera upgrades, but $5,000 was added to the small equipment category of the courthouse, or under the IT category. Under non-departmental, the elimination of $33,000 for membership dues to the Valley Partnership Joint Development Authority. Also, under community center, fitness equipment, $8,000 was added. Excuse me, $16,000 was initially included in the fitness equipment line, that was removed, and $8,000 is the new proposed budget line item for that. Probate court had $200 added for education and training, $700 added to dues and fees, $3,050 added to travel expenses within their budget. The public works department had $40,000 added for a tractor slash mower. Under the area of recreation, the elimination of $16,000 for portable mounds under small equipment was reclassed to add $16,000 for fencing repairs to backstops at Multrie Park. Also, under the solid waste fund, $54,000 was added for new scales out at the solid waste site, and also since last time, the SPOST 2019 was approved by the voters, and the budget for fiscal year 2019 of $600,100 was added to the fiscal year 2018-2019 budget.
As revenue.
As revenue, that's correct. The total change in the overall budget at that point in time would have been roughly $590,000 with all of those taken into account. The net change to the general fund after tonight was, from the original budget, was a reduction of $11,450.
Okay, thank you. I, you were about to, fitness equipment? You did? I was going to say. 16,800?
16,800, yes.
Randy, any comments you want to make about the budget at this point in time? Okay, are there any citizens here who wish to make any comment about, ask any question about the budget? Okay, hearing none. This is the first public hearing. Our second public hearing will be at our next meeting, which will be June 19. After that public hearing, then we will adopt a budget. Thank you, Clint, for all that. Appreciate it very much. All right, next item is calling on Stephen Woski, who's our recreation director, regarding the GRPA playground grant application for Eldersley Park. Steve?
GRPA has partnered with PlayCor to offer $1.5 billion in grant money to GRPA agencies, which Harris County Recreation is a GRPA agency, for playgrounds. It's a $60,000, 100% match, minimum $60,000. And that's for equipment, and then it'd be looking at how much of the cost to install the equipment and everything, it was around about another $20,000. So our portion for a, for this, be about $80,000, but it'd be a $140,000 project, which, as you know, we just approved a $100,000 project for Pay Park, and this would make the playground a lot, a lot bigger, a little bit nicer for Eldersley Park. Yesterday, I actually had a conversation with Mr. Loudermilk, and his foundation has, his wife and his foundation have graciously said that they were donating $60,000 for the match, as long as we meet the standards of the grant and receive the grant. The grant has a couple of little steps, the deadline to apply for the grant is this Thursday, which I've been working on, and I just need your approval. And then, along with that, the playground will have a couple of other little deadlines that we'll have to meet, but the ultimate deadline will be November 1st, to have it installed and opened, ready for the public on November 1st. That is the stipulations of the grant, and that was also the stipulations of the donation that Mr. Loudermilk and his foundation said, stated. The other $20,000, I am actively seeking private donations, and looking at trying to utilize that instead of utilizing the money that we have designated for Eldersley Park, so we can use that for more activities and more of the road projects and the entrance features and other things that y'all have approved for us to achieve. So that is the grant itself. I believe the application is in front of y'all, and then the other part of it is, I have to write a thousand-word, 1,000 to 2,000-word essay, talking about the demographics, and... and location and the certifications that we'd be going after. PlayCor offers national demonstration certifications, which they put us on a national registry. With Eldersly Park being a passit park, I'm going after two certifications, which one of them is required by the grant, which is play on, and the other one will be natural grounds, to make the playground look, look and feel like you're in the natural environment of, like Eldersly with our master plan of Eldersly Park.
Isn't there a twenty-five thousand dollar donation already for the playground?
That was changed and moved to the library. But... Yeah, but the gentleman who made that donation, I have also been in talks with because he just did a donation to help for some kids, paid for some kids to do swim lessons. I've been talks with him as well, and he has said that he may come to the table with a little bit of money, but I don't think he's gonna give the full twenty thousand.
I have a question, Stephen.
Yes, ma'am.
Our county board's, its fund will be from SPOST two thousand and four, is that, and then?
No, that's not correct.
The twenty thousand dollars?
Twenty thousand dollars is not correct.
So, it's coming from?
It'll be coming from private donations or the money that is designated for Eldersly Park. But the goal is to get private donations.
Cause that, your application says county general funds.
Yeah, yes, county general funds.
Does it, don't you still have money in SPOST? Two thousand and four?
Not, two thousand and four, no, not, that has to be designated for Pay Park, and that's, that's me. But, no, this is, there is SPOST money that's designated for Eldersly Park, I think it's in the two thousand and nine SPOST.
Two thousand and nine's gone.
Okay.
There is no SPOST money, then, we can use the twenty thousand?
No. No, that, the portion of the Eldersly Park is the sale of that property. And a little bit of extra money that was designated, I think it was total around five hundred thousand, that was designated towards Eldersly Park, but that's all, we're budging that out for other projects.
You think the property is ready, no?
The plan is to do maybe a soft opening at that point, but I think we're just gonna try and bid out the road and the entrance features and getting that going, along with having some of the walking trails open. Probably not all the walking trails and, and everything, but to have access to the building and the playground and the, the play, play field and everything, I'm hoping that we will have it at that point.
If it is not finished by November one, that was one of the stipulations from all of them.
That is one of the stipulations, they did say that they would allow us an exception if we need to apply for it, but it is one of the, one of the stipulations, and I plan on hoping to meet that.
Okay, and what's the plan if we, if that does not happen, for the city file?
Like I said, they allow us for exceptions, they have said that they've gone a couple of months past that and, and everything, but the target that we're reaching and everything is to meet that one.
You say exceptions, would that mean allowing us back to the exceptions? What you said was that they?
The deadline.
Is that?
The deadline.
The deadline? His deadline is to meet November first, is what was stated in the email and the conversation I had with him, along with the application of the grant, as long as it meets the standards of the grant. Now, I have not talked to him, if we did not, I did not ask him that question.
Does the grant have a November first deadline?
Yes.
But you would know by the time you have contracts up there that wasn't?
Yeah, there's a couple other concept plans and with the playground, have them signed, done, and a couple other little things that you have to meet by certain points throughout the next several months, and that, as long as you meet those deadlines, you will be on target to meet everything else.
What do we have budgeted currently toward playground?
On the recreation side, currently, we don't have anything budgeted towards playgrounds except for the Eldersly Park project.
That's what I'm talking about, we currently have four.
Well, the whole project itself, Randy, but...
It's SPOST twenty-fourteen, we've budgeted five hundred and ten thousand dollars for Eldersly Park. That's the turn lanes, internal ground road, entrance features, bridges, some trails, some directional signage, those, those sort of things.
That's not saying playground? No, that's why, that's why, I think where Vicki was going is, we don't have anything in our budget for this twenty thousand dollars.
There's no money for match.
Or, or the installation.
Well, that, that's currently why I'm going after it probably.
Right, right, if you don't, then we're obligated for twenty thousand that we have not budgeted, is that correct?
Oh, and refuse grant.
Well, or we could move money around to five hundred and ten thousand, we could take twenty thousand out of that.
Is there that kind of link way in that fee?
Yes.
I'd just like to see us do it within what we're normally budgeted.
Okay. Any other questions?
I don't think that one, and the latter ones do understand, if we were not to get the grant, they're, they're fully aware of that one.
Yes. Yeah.
They, we're not obligated to do this.
Yeah, well, their, their donation is based on us receiving the grant and going after it.
Just wanna make sure they're, they're aware of that.
Yes, Mr. Loudermilk and I had that conversation yesterday.
All right, any other discussion? Any other motions?
I'll make the motion that we have proven for Mr. Woski to apply for this grant for the playground at Eldersly Park with the stipulations that we discussed as far as private conditions to make up the actual installation. Is that correct, the match and installation?
Yes.
May I ask you to add, and that we've received updates as to the progress toward this goal? I'd say monthly, once, once, once we hear on the grant, I think, and monthly, we need to...
Just to let you know, I should, the deadline to apply for the grant is this Thursday. We should find out if we received the grants next week on the fourteenth.
After you receive the answer, if it's positive, then I'd say, what do you say, monthly, at least monthly in, in the beginning. Okay. All right, so that's, then it ended the motion to have a second.
I'd like to second it, but I'd like to address, if you've admitted that if we, that there are not sufficient donations for the twenty thousand that come, that that twenty thousand installation fee coming out of the amount already budgeted for Eldersly Park. In the spot, it's lost.
All right, that has been done, any other discussion? All in favor, please, if you've already had, if those care. Thank you, Steve. Next is scheduled, fee schedule revisions for community center and recreation facilities. Mr. Woski?
You should have in front of you the fee schedule, the current one, and then the one that I have highlighted and to make a few changes. A couple of changes were to change it, instead of saying guest or member, to say guest. Currently, right now, you have to be a mem, be a member of the facility in order to come in, or you have to have a member with you and be their guest. We have several people that have started coming in, being in the summer months, who are coming in that are not friends with members and are willing to pay the extra fee, and we're having to turn them away. And I'd like to be able to allow them to come in, see the amenities, see what we have to offer, and then try to encourage them to become members after that. And that's, that is why I'm wanting to change that. And then also, the added county fee is the same as the in-county fee, and I've increased that by a dollar to add more of, of a perk of being a county resident dropping in and, and using the facility instead of the added county. The other one on the front, front page is the hours for Wednesday. We did a survey, and I guess I left the sheet over there, but the survey came back with a hundred and twenty responses. Over eighty percent of the responses were that they would like to see us open on Wednesday. Also, with the library being right next door, we have draw, started drawing in more people coming into the facility, and a lot of them come over on Wednesdays because the library is doing reading programs on Wednesday, and they are not able to enjoy the facility because we are currently closed on Wednesdays. With that, looking at the budget, trying to stay within the same constructions of budget, I have trimmed Friday down by two hours because looking at the numbers of when people come in and, and everything, that is our low point of, of the time. Allowing us to open on Wednesday, being open for a full eight to, eight-thirty to eight P.M., and then, like I said, trimming down and staying within our budget confines. We will still do after-hour parties and have an after events on Fridays. Also, the rental side of the sheets, using the facility, I've just changed the wording from service organization to nonprofit organizations. Now, if you look at the bottom of, of the sheets, or on the, the bottom of the sheet, I still have the service organizations that we allow to use the facility for free, but it's to allow other nonprofit organizations to come in and start using that facility and, and pay a little bit of a fee to use the facility. Then, if you also look at in the classes, raise the non-member rate from a dollar fifty a day to three dollars a day to kind of equal out one set number, and then with classes, we may do sessions, because we're trying to start doing some new classes pretty soon, and they may do sessions instead of just do it where we calculate the fee per, each day, just doing a flat twenty dollar rate for the sessions, for non-members. The, the other thing I have highlighted and have question marks on, the instructor collecting the fee, and then we received a hundred percent and everything. My experiences with, and I'll just use today as an example, we have an art camp going on, and instructors collect the fee, and it's trying to go off their sheet of what the kids paid and doing things like that, and making sure they're paying us the correct fee for the added county, they go into the, the third percent, what they owe us. It was a little time concern. Our system allows us to collect the money ourselves, and then we treat instructors as vendors. And Clint and I had this discussion to where we treat them as vendors, and then we, in turn, pay them as a vendor their portion, and then ten ninety-nine. Now, they will still have to meet all the criteria of having insurance, the business license, and all that aspect. That is something that I was wanting to introduce, and we don't have to move forward with that at this time if you do not like to, but I just wanted to introduce that. The other factor is on camps and classes, utilizing our fields, if they're not associated with the youth associations, utilizing our fields or our tennis courts, something like that, I raised it to a eighty, twenty percent instead of a nine, ninety, ten, just to get that portion and, and go into that, that route. The gym rates, we had it set by how many people are in the gym, and I just trimmed it down to hourly and daily rates to kind of take some of that confusion. Now, with the swimming pool, we still have it set by the number of people in, in the pool area, because that is the standard of what American Red Cross requires. You have to have so many lifeguards in, in the pool area, about how many pool people are in the pool location. So, we left that aspect, but on the, the hourly rates and daily rates, we just tweaked those and, and pretty much kept them, tried to keep them at the same prices. Field reservations, the, I couldn't find anything on the current sheet about field reservations, we've had some people call and ask about renting the fields and, and renting things different, for different venues and utilizing our fields. I went back and I had to go back to, I can't remember what year it was, but it was a fee that was set a while back, and it was at a hundred and sixty dollars a, a day rate, and I was trying to get more in line with the other surrounding counties along with that, so I went with a thirty, thirty dollar rate per hour, as long as it is not a non, as long, as long as it's not a youth association team. And they also had to have ninety percent, like if they're a travel baseball team, they have to have ninety percent of their kids participate in the little league, and then there's no fee. This is something that I went to the rec board with, and the rec board made that recommendation, and that's why I put that in there. The hundred and thirty dollars a day per field is kind of what goes along with the Grange, Tri-County, and Columbus areas, I've had what they charge per day. And then the concession rate, youth associations would have first choices, if there was somebody that rented our fields and wanted to do an event out there, youth associations would have first choice to do fundraiser on their end, and if not, we would charge a hundred dollars a day. But they would still not have access to our concession stand. They would just be able to do it there at the property, and that was just some way to get some money back for, if they are doing concessions. Field and gym rentals, they do have to meet certain criterias of the available space, and then they have to have insurance, general liability insurance that will be approved and labeled through the county. Along with that, the associations will not be charged these fees, and that was one of the things that we want, they're, they're not being charged these fees. These are travel teams or somebody want to host an event out at our fields or in our gym or something like, that would be who would be charged those, those fees. And, and, cause our sole purpose is to provide a recreation service, and when those fields are not being utilized, to still allow people to come and utilize those fields, but you're gonna, if you're an organized group, you're gonna have to pay to utilize those fees. That pretty much sums up the changes. Now, like I said, I did leave no charges for those service groups that we currently do have, like Boy Scouts, or Girl Scouts, and church organizations, and school, school organization, we have a user agreement that we're working on as well, where we use, we currently use their, their football field and for middle school for, you know, multiple things, and then they're gonna be using our ba, our baseball field, multi-part, and softball field for their upcoming events as well. So, we, we have a user agreement there, so there'll be no extra charge, but there won't be no charges.
I have a couple of questions.
Yes, ma'am.
One is, under the section, private places at the community center?
Yes, ma'am.
And you've got three dollars a day or twenty dollars a session, what do you define a session?
A lot, a lot of classes, instead of doing it where they charge a daily fee, they charge a session fee. And session would be maybe having class once a week for six weeks, that classifies as a session. And that's where that will come in, or they might have class twice a week for six weeks, and that's, that's what we classify as a session instead of a daily drop-in rate, like right now, yoga does a class and does a daily drop-in rate, and then we charge that additional fee for non-members.
Is, is that a term that's already understood as far as the definition?
Oh, in recreation, it is.
And the other question is with the cha, proposed changes in your hours of operation, you can do that with your current staff?
Yes.
Thank you.
I have, I have a couple. If you're gonna be open?
If you're going to be open seven days a week, when do you normally do your cleaning and your pool maintenance and all of that?
Well, typically with aquatic centers, they're open seven days a week.
I'm talking hours.
Yeah, and I'm just trying to get it. Typically, they're open seven days a week, and what you do is you come in a little early, and you clean it, or you clean it afterwards. And you're also, the thing that I've done now, we've hired some new lifeguards, and I've done two training sessions with them already. And one of the things that I'm implementing with them is making sure you're cleaning up the pool and making sure there's no bottles and trash around when you're closing the pool down, and cleaning the areas, then also keeping the food in the food designated areas. That's another way that we keep the pool clean and the area of the pool clean. Maintenance, we may have to shut down. If there's anything major goes on, we may have to shut down for a day just to keep that maintenance going. But currently, right now, we close on Wednesdays, and we're vacuuming the pool, and that's pretty much what we're doing, but vacuuming the pool could, you know, we could come in at 6:00 in the morning and vacuum the pool and have it done by 8:00 so that they are able to open up and have everything go.
Okay. Who does like the major cleaning now? Is that your prisoners?
The prisoners and my pool operator.
Okay. How early can they be there and how late can they stop?
Well, currently, the prisoners get there about 8:00, about 8:00, 8:30 is when we get them. But I can make arrangements with the wardens where if I need to get them earlier, I can, or I can keep them later, I can. That is something that I've already discussed with the warden as well, and also because of Friday closing at 4:00, I can actually keep the prisoners a little bit extra Fridays where we're doing a little cleaning during that time as well. And it is something that I've already discussed with the warden about trying to figure out cleaning times and everything. But the other thing is with aquatic centers, you want to try to hit it while it's hot. And right now, it's hot, it's starting to warm up and get hot, and we want to get the patrons coming in and utilizing them. And like I said, us having the library right next to us, we've had a lot of people come and knock on the doors and show up, and we have to turn them away because we're closed on Wednesdays. And to me, this is another way to help us grow our membership. And like I said, the survey that we did, 80% of the people that were surveyed, that responded to their survey, said that they would like to see us open up on Wednesdays.
Okay. The no charge for service organizations. What's the criteria to meet the definition of a service organization and not a nonprofit? I don't want to see three.
That was already approved through you as commissioners.
Those service organizations, y'all have approved those to be the ones.
Is it on the bottom? Yeah, I see that on the bottom, but I see that on the bottom. And I don't recall why we limited it to these organizations. I don't recall why we did that.
That was just the recommendation of, and we just.
Because we have other service organizations.
I'm going to tell you, from my past history dealing with it, we don't typically give the building away for utilization. We charge them a small nonprofit fee, even if it's a charge or a Boy Scout group or something like that. We typically do charge them a small nonprofit fee. But in place here.
No, you don't say they're charged.
Yeah.
It needs to be, in my opinion, it needs to be the same.
Well, I agree. It's just I was, because that has already been approved, that was what I was going with.
That's it. I don't remember one. A nonprofit to rent the gym for a day would be $550 a day. Am I reading that correctly?
That is for both courts. No, sorry. No, sorry. That's not correct. The second rate, the 350, is the nonprofit rate. And that is for both courts.
Okay. What's the 550?
That is the rate for somebody that's not a nonprofit. Somebody want to come in and just have a health fair or want to have their wedding in the gym.
You probably need to make that determination as much as I do. Because I was reading it as $550 a day for a nonprofit, which would be a little steep there.
That, like I said, that's the 350 per day. The higher rate is not.
Okay. Oh, we had an incident several months ago out there. What have we done, and this is just for my own information, what have we done about security? In the evenings, what we have, female employees who are there alone?
Well, currently, I have implemented a new policy to where all employees, when they're closing up, they have to walk out together. I did ask for another part-time position, but that was, did not make the budget. That was to allow a nighttime employee. But now, we do have a gentleman who works some nights and weekends, but he has been out for the last two or three months due to medical illnesses and has taken a leave of absence.
How many part-time do you have and full-time?
Full-time, I have, well, full-time spots, I have five, not counting me. Now, there's one that's vacant, a part maintenance tech for a soccer complex.
So, you have four at present?
Yeah, four at present.
You have field.
And part-time, I have, I think it's about 10.
You're including recreation and community center?
Yes.
Okay, for what, or just for the community?
I mean, just the community center. All right. Full-time, I have one. That is my pool operator. Ashley's technically under recreation.
Yeah.
And so am I. Then, part-timers, I have the front desk employees, which I have six, I believe. And then lifeguards, I have 12 currently on staff right now.
And most of those are teenagers or high school students, right?
Yes, most of them are high school. There's a few college students, but most of them are high school students. And then I have one other part-timer right now that is filling in as a temporary.
And, and this will be my last one. When school starts back, do you anticipate more or less usage on Friday nights after four?
After four, I anticipate less, especially with the football season going on. And looking at the numbers, I, that was one thing I did look at the numbers. Now, I didn't look in the fall, I looked for the summer time numbers. And I looked back for, I excluded last year because of the issues we had with the pool. And then I looked for a total of three years, other three years, and the average number that we had on Fridays from May to July was 40.
And I do come on those, you know, too. And I think I asked you this during budget, but I don't remember. How many members do we have?
I.
Maybe you taught me, but I don't remember.
I'm going to go and tell you, I've looked it up about 400 times in the system. It's hard to see active members. We have 9,000 contacts in the system, but that is not active members. Active members, looking at it, I was trying to pull it again today, and I've tried to get a couple of people to help, but our system is not very user-friendly good nicely. But I'm estimating from what I was trying to look at is around 4,000. And that's members counting kids and everything.
And just as an aside, when we were talking about the vendors, we talked about that when we opened, before we opened the community center, these are members. We talked about collecting the money, but there was some issue, an issue in the 1099 or something. I don't recall what that was.
They didn't want to issue 1099s. They didn't want to do any additional paperwork because I asked them that specific question.
David.
Joe.
Yeah, John.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to look at this, and so I'd like to take this to the next floor.
All right. Page 2, I like 2. All right, thank you. All right, anything else on the new business? All right, county manager, any, first item there was ambulance purchase?
Mr. Chairman, board commissioners, you heard through the budget process from our EMS department that our four frontline ambulances and two reserve ambulances are, they're old, excessive mileage, general underliability, every placement ambulance ready. Anticipation of this, the four ambulances that were replacements were included in the SPOSS 2019 proposal, and the voters approved that proposal during last month. And those collections will begin during next fiscal year, beginning April 2019. And two of the four ambulances were programmed to be purchased during the first year of the SPOSS, at 200,000 each. And since ambulances are built as specifications, taking about three or four months to build in addition to bid preparation, advertising, and bidding wartime, and due to the, just the longevity of these things, basically, I'd like to expedite the process to purchase the ambulances by preparing the record, by starting to prepare the bid specs, getting them out for advertisement, and then having the board award in August, because again, it takes a long time. So, basically, to expedite the purchasing process would be to prepare the bid specs in June, conduct advertising, distribute bids, collect bids, evaluate the bids in July, have the board award the bid in August, order the two ambulances, 100-day delivery time. And if we begin now, the two new ambulances could be delivered in maybe late November, early December. But the SPOSS 2019 funds aren't here yet. So, we would need like a four-month loan from the general fund or solid waste fund during November, December, which is the high cash flow time because property tax payments have already been submitted by them. And then basically take a four-month loan, pay it back the SPOSS 2019 money as it comes in in April and May. So, that is the proposal on the table. And if not approved, we'll just push the procurement schedule back to about four months so that the cash and the SPOSS 2019 will meet when the money comes in to meet the demand for those funds. And you can see the attachment is where the SPOSS law allows this, and the county attorney, the acting county attorney has prepared a reimbursement resolution whereby if the board chooses to do this, simply a loan from one of the funds, from the general fund, and then they pay it back four months, about four months, all within the same fiscal year.
I have a question on the reimbursement resolution. Number two, it says the general fund should be fully reimbursed for SPOSS 2019 proceeds as soon as practical and no event, no later than the expiration of the SPOSS 2019 collection period. We're planning on doing it in the first two or three months. What is the end of the SPOSS? Would it be December, or are you talking the fiscal year collection?
Are you talking the section there?
It actually reads with the end of SPOSS 2019 collection, and I'd like that to be amended by the end of, by the end of the budgeting year 2019.
About as soon as practical or by June 30, 2019?
Or no later than June 30, 2019?
And I'd like.
I'm more comfortable on that.
And I'd like to see it fully reimbursed to include any interest that is lost. According to this, it says borrow and borrow if the county has the right to issue debt for that payment.
I think that's something we want to look at a little closely. I know routinely this is done in tri-county. I do not believe that charge interest. There are only certain, the interest would be payable to the SPOSS fund. And there are only certain permitted investments for your SPOSS fund.
Could it be worded then that just, that they would be reimbursed for any interest that they would have otherwise earned, so that it's just a full reimbursement? That's all I'm talking about, because if the funds were in Georgia fund, they would have earned X dollars.
Georgia fund.
Just strictly reimbursed.
Like about 1.54% right now.
Yeah, but I think it's, I think it's only the fair and right thing to do to really keep it.
I think what I would recommend is that we look at that a little bit more closely to make sure that is permissible. If you want to act on this today, you can make the reservation. To the extent allowed by law, to include the interest to the extent allowed by law, you can look at it.
Okay. Thank you. The other comment I made is that what I made before, let's don't develop amnesia when it's time to repay the general fund.
That's the purpose of this reservation, so yeah.
And I think we talked about either from general fund or solid waste fund, so does it matter which? And do we need, do we need a specification?
Yes.
So, is it better to use one fund or the other?
I don't think it matters. I mean, a four-month loan, at the heart of the cash flow process.
Essentially, at that point in time. Right now, they essentially have the same balance of Georgia fund, one, to your point there, but at that point in time, they may not.
So, which do you think is the safe spend?
Trying to take into account some of the usage we've got budgeted from solid waste.
Which are going to come in July, August, September, April. I would say general fund.
I think so.
I know it's not much, but it just seems, it just seems, it just wants to be one.
So, we'll go into, I don't know, two. So, the general fund will be fully reimbursed for SPOSS 2019 proceeds as soon as practical or no later than June 30, 2019, including interest as allowed by law, or something to that.
And maybe allowed by.
As maybe allowed by law.
Okay.
Okay. All right. Do you have a motion?
I'd like to make that motion as we just discussed. I'll say.
Motion in a second. Discussion. If you're in all in favor of that motion, please sit if I raise my hand. All right, the other, next item is project updates.
Mr. Chairman, board commissioners, the fiscal year is coming to a conclusion, and we are preparing for next fiscal year. That will begin July 1st. A vast majority of the program work has been accomplished. Let me hit some of the highlights that have not, that has not been. Number eight, the county wide public safety radio system, divorce power contract has been made, and we are going through that contract as we speak. So, that's number eight. Again, everything has been completed. The Catala fire truck will be in next year's budget. The Hampton Business Park is progressing, weather, there's some weather delays, but that is progressing nicely, number 21. Number 22, Holland Drive, paving. Number twenty-two, Holland Drive paving, um, the acting county attorney is unraveling those two last runaway deeds. Uh, there are title issues and that has been unraveled and repaired.
Have you heard from the other two that were, that are in the safety?
Yes, both of them are in agreement with certain stipulations. One, for example, wants to be paid for his land at market value and for any trees that are cut down. The other one wants to swap some land. So they're both yeses with, with, with conditions. They're going to be worked through. But then I answer matter. And then number twenty-seven, the playground for paint park and the tennis court resurfacing, they're well on their way to getting accomplished, um, the tennis courts by late June, if it doesn't rain anymore. And then the playground by mid to late August. Earlier than that. So, and that will, those two things would exhaust the SPOS oh-four funds. And the SPOS oh-nine funds have been exhausted. Number forty-nine, Redoubt Street for baseball's new building used in SPOS 2014, that is on bid. The pre-bid meeting, mandatory pre-bid meeting is June twenty-ninth. The deadline to receive bids is July the tenth. The board will hopefully award it July the seventeenth and there will be a nine-day completion period. So that is number forty-nine. Number fifty-four, the last one, the content update. Um, the next meeting is on June the twenty-first at the new library from six to eight P.M. And that is discussing the needs and opportunities section. And that has been advertised on the website and through our social media and as well as, um, those various appointing board members. You can see in the SPOS 2019 collection charts, the amount for the most recent month of May for April's collections is about the same as last month and lower than last year. It's so far eighty-one point six percent.